Excuse me all, prior to beginning, uh, did anybody lose a ticket by any chance? We found a ticket. Has anybody lost a ticket by any chance?
That's my lottery ticket, let me get it.
No? Can't tell you if it's a winner, but if nobody has, we'll be here.
That's mine.
Unfortunately not.
She said is it for a fundraiser?
It is. Okay.
I'll get it from you later.
All right.
All right. Right, and where is it too?
And...
We ready.
On your call, Madam President.
Trenton City Council meeting Thursday, March 7th is hereby in session. Let us salute the plan.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Adequate notice of this meeting has been given in accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act pursuant to Public Laws 1975, Chapter 231. This agenda is complete to the extent known and was sent to the Trenton Times, posted on the first floor bulletin board in City Hall and filed in the city clerk's office. Formal action will be taken. Mr. Persia?
Roll call. Councilwoman Edwards, present. Vice President Figaro Kettinberg. Councilwoman Frisbee. Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Presente.
Councilman Harrison, for the record, Councilman Harrison is present via phone.
Present.
Thank you. Thank you, sir. Councilwoman Williams. And Council President Feliciano. Myself, Brandon Garcia, municipal clerk, present. Here is Legislative Counsel, Mr. Edward Cologi. And in for West Bridges is Mr. Scott Mikkio. Thank you. On your call, Madam President.
May continue, thank you.
Certainly, invoke, uh, Madam President, if you like, I'd like to read the invocation at this time.
Yes, thank you.
All mighty God, who holds the fate of man and nation, we most humbly beseech thee to bless this our city, these deliberations, and these thy servants, that they may act with wisdom and understanding for the good of our community and thy greater glory. Amen. And Madam President, at this time, I believe we have some recognitions, or at least some recognition that needs to, that to be done?
Yes, we will have council recognition done by Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Thank you, everyone, for being present. So I'm just gonna read, um, a little bit of the resolution into the record as we are, the city, city council, city of Trenton, resolution honoring the Trenton Central High School varsity and junior varsity cheerleading team. Whereas Trenton Central High School Cheer Program is under the direction of head coach Ayesha Dawkins and assistant coach Amber Wilson. The cheer program is known for their high energy and spirit that has inspired many crowds for several decades. The style of cheer this team is known for is called Stomp and Shake, which began in our southern states. Trenton Central High School has mastered this style of cheer, which has inspired many to come see them perform. And whereas, in addition to entertaining the crowd and inspiring their teams, the student athletes are encouraged to work within their community by completing, by completing community service hours. And whereas both coaches and volunteers, both coaches and team members have volunteered at many local events, which has given them much pride in their community. They participated in bookbag giveaways and feeding the homeless, providing, helping to organize and distribute bookbags to children and assistants. The cheer team volunteers times with elementary students for writing face painting and free cheer clinics throughout the state to help motivate our young people to become involved in the sport of cheer. And whereas additionally, within the last 10 years, the program has excelled in competitive cheer. They have competed in the Colonial Valley Conference Cheer Competition, which includes all Mercer County High Schools since 20, since 2015. To date, they have won first place, first place in game day CVC in 2018. They also went, won Grand Champs in 2018. And for those who may not know, the sport of cheer Grand Champs is they came in first place out of all of the high schools in Mercer County. They've won Most Spirited in 2016, 2017, 2018, and also 2023. The program is preparing for their next cheer competition in November. And now, therefore be, be it resolved that the Trenton City Council hereby wishes to recognize the Trenton Central High School Cheerleading Teams, both varsity and junior varsity, for continuing to be the positive energy and role models for other students in the community. Yes, so before, before we take our pictures, I just wanted to, um, you know, obviously, everyone knows that the cheer team is near and dear to my heart as one of the former, former coaches of Trenton Central High School and obviously a former cheerleader. But these young ladies go unrecognized. We often go to the basketball games and we go to baseball games, the football games, and a lot of people always, um, they seem to always cheer for the, the actual players, but not realizing how much these young ladies put into the cheer sports. So I wanted to personally say thank you. I wanted to recognize you because you are always behind the scenes. You always are showing up when we are asking you to be present somewhere. And I just wanted you to know on behalf of the city council that we love you, we always cheer for you, and I'm, I'm excited to see you all here and how the cheer program has, has grown. Um, to Coach Dawkins and Coach Wilson, we love you. I know how much time goes in. It goes from July until March, every single day. And people don't understand that that's a lot of time. So thank you, thank you, thank you for being here. And I just wanted, if anyone else wants to say something before you all speak.
Madam President? So, good evening, and I'm excited to see you. I love seeing our, our young folks in the, uh, building. I want you to realize that this is an opportunity when instead of you guys cheering and encouraging someone else, we want to cheer and encourage you. So this is your moment to be encouraged and to thank you for all that you do to motivate and encourage those that are on the, um, floor. You are the ones that make a difference on a great day and even on a not-so-great day. So I just wanted to let you know, I salute you. I appreciate, I know that is a hard, it is hard work. I know because I tried and I didn't have enough rhythm to get on the cheer team myself. So, um, I appreciate the work, um, that you ladies, and if there are any gents that help you out as well, that you, that you guys all put in. So I congratulate you. I salute you on this evening.
Councilwoman Williams, thank you, ma'am.
I just wanted, uh, congratulate you and say thank you for everything that you do. Uh, you did an amazing job even just a few nights ago in the steps of City Hall for the celebration of the key of the city. And, uh, if the Christmas parade, you performed in a Christmas parade, uh, in the cold. So you're always there for our city, just as you're always there for TCHS and you're always there for the other athletes. And let it be known, cheerleading is a sport. Cheerleading is a sport. I, I hope that you, they do get varsity letters and so forth. Okay. That they do, excellent. So keep it going. When you go off to college, if you go off to college, don't give up on cheerleading. Stay involved with it. That's a great way to support your school. Travel, maybe we'll see some of you on, you know, television. But, um, thank you so much for putting the time in and, uh, for letting us recognize you. Thank you, ma'am.
Council Vice President?
Hey, guys. So I just want to congratulate you guys as a TCHS graduate, um, as a varsity softball and soccer player, and as a TCHS alumni president. I just want to congratulate you all for all your hard work, all your due diligence, all the endurance and, and all the pep that you guys bring to all of the games. I mean, all the excitement, and thank you all. Congratulations.
Councilwoman Edwards? Did you want to say something?
Why not? Hi, ladies. Um, it's a pleasure to see you here. I know a few of you through my daughter Michaela, who's back there. Um, I'm just sitting here texting her pictures, like, oh, some of your friends are here. I'm so proud of you. So is she. And, um, I mean, I just love the energy, energy that you all bring to all the games. Without the cheerleaders, there is no cheer at the games. Like, you bring the energy, you live in the crowd, and we love that for you. And we can't do these games without you. So keep it up. Cheerleading is a sport. I definitely tried out, but boxing was more my thing. So I went that way. And congratulations, as well deserved, and I'll see you at some of the games in the future.
Councilman Harrison, did you want to say anything?
Cold weather and, and the, uh, basketball games, always promoting a positive message for this great city. So thank you, uh, Councilwoman Yasmin Gonzalez, and thank you to all the young ladies who, uh, represent Trent High School every day. Thank you so much.
So thank you all for the tremendous work that you do. Thank you for the outstanding spirit that you do bring each and every time. I graduated from Notre Dame, right, back in 88, so I'm an old head. But I remember, I, I couldn't deal with cheerleading, so I was a pom-pom girl in the band. But I remember when we would show up at different games and stuff, and the cheerleaders would come out, we would always put our heads down because we just knew Trent High was gonna bring the heat like none other. And so they did it then, and you continue the legacy now. And so we thank you for your dedication, your commitment. Thank you to your coaches that put in the tireless effort to make it, make sure that your routines are on point, to make sure that you are in sync, right, and that you are the true tornado spirit that we need that carries our teams as we go forward in battle, on the field or on the court. So thank you so much. God bless. At this time, if one of the coaches or both coaches want to say something, you could come to the podium, press the mic on, say something. Or one of the cheerleaders?
I'm about to cheer out.
Oh, you want to cheer? That's it, okay. Press the button and turn the mic on, babe. There you go. Yep, there you go.
Okay. Good evening, City Council.
Good evening, Trenton citizens.
I'm Captain Amari Velagos, Class 24.
I'm co-captain of Sadi Gaddis.
Um, and we just want to graciously thank you guys for the recognition. Um, we are ambassadors for not only the spirit of our school, Trenton Central High, but role models of our community. We often get overlooked as a sport, and the amount of hard work, dedication, and spirit sets us apart from any and everybody. We're not just a team of girls. We are young women who have been molded by coaches such as Ayesha Dawkins, Coach Sharon Grady, and of course, one of our councilwomen is Yasmin Emily Gonzalez. Um, these women have put us on a road to success with multiple aspects of sisterhood, multiple levels of strength physically and mentally. And we not only cheer for various sporting events, but actively serving our community and enjoying every bit of it at every single time. Our program prides on leaders, for our peers, families, and character. Cheer has given us a safe space to come to whenever, no matter the situation. I hope that our youth always feels welcomed by our energy. I hope that you guys always feel welcomed by our energy. And we hope that you will always be ready to cheer for us and for the city of Trenton. So once again, we thank you tremendously for this amazing recognition. Thank you.
All right, we're gonna step out for a moment quickly and move to the staircase so we could take a couple pictures and come back to the meeting. We ask everyone, if you just bear with us just a few minutes while we do this, we'll be right back. Everyone, if you could step out to the staircase. Thank you. Mr. Garcia, we're ready.
No? What? Oh. Hold on one second. Yeah, let me, let me get this going. On your call, Madam President.
We can continue with the cannabis presentation for the vault, please?
Certainly. Madam President, you have a presentation here for cannabis. It is the Vault. Thank you. Honorable counsel.
If you could please, I'm sorry, remind of the time and everything, Mr. Garcia. Presenting time, thank you.
And to the presenters, just so you understand, Ken, you'll be limited to a number of, I'm sorry, how many minutes? 10 minutes for your presentation? Uh, and Mr. Wolfski, I take it, will be introducing. Go ahead.
Yes, sir. Uh, I'm Ken Wolfski, and I'm chairman of the Cannabis Advisory Committee. And on the January, our January meeting, we evaluated the application from the Vault, and we recommended that the city issue a resolution of local support for the Vault. Uh, we found a robust micro retailer application that addressed the criteria in the ordinance uh, by a female social equity applicant, uh, Haitian applicant and Trenton resident, Kayla Massanat. And she's here today with her mother, um, Vertuli Massanat. So here they are.
Thank you. Good evening, Council.
I'm sorry. Thank you. Go ahead.
Good evening, Council. Um, my name is Vertuli Massanet, and I am the daily operations manager for the Vault. To my left here is Kayla Massanet, owner of the Vault, and she'll be coming up as well. Um, for full disclosure, Kayla is my daughter, and I'm also her realtor. And I'm now under her employ as the daily operations manager for the Vault. For the interest of time, we have presented a binder that contains all the information, the same information that was given to the Cannabis Committee for review. There's also the supporting documentation along with our conditional license that we've already been awarded by the state. Um, we also, inside the binder, you will find that we have hired count, um, a capital, um, fundraiser. We have our, um, funding and everything else. So I'm just gonna read this for the interest of time so I don't get lost. Um, we respectfully come before you as we already have our conditional cannabis license from the state of New Jersey, asking that you grant us the resolution of support to continue our journey in obtaining an annual Class 5 Cannabis Retail License from the state of New Jersey. Kayla Massanet has lived in the city all her life. She is 100% owner of the Vault, which has received the social equity designation by virtue of having lived in the city of Trenton for over 10 years. Her business has been certified by the state as a woman minority-owned business. And through, and though Trenton is deemed economically disadvantaged by the state, this is an opportunity to create multi-generational wealth for her family that will allow her to demonstrate and train others to have the same. She has tended to sell usable cannabis items and related supplies within the state's maximum limits and responsibly to our residents along with consumers over the age of 21. There is a plan in place to hire 10 employees, operate the cannabis establishment in accordance with the CRC regulations for micro businesses while occupying an area of no more than 2,500 square feet. 3133 East State Street satisfies the buffering requirements. It is located in the downtown district, more than 500 feet from any other possible, possibly soon-to-open dispensary. It is not located within 70, 150 feet of schools where children are routinely present, measured from door-to-door walking distance. It is not located within 250 feet from the front entrance to a place of worship. A completed application was submitted to the city for review and determined to be complete and compliant, uh, a compliant application by the zoning official. The City Cannabis Advisory Committee, appointed by the city governing body, acted as the body for local review for the city and has also deemed the application to be complete. Private funding has been obtained, and a capital fundraiser has been hired. And proof of financial capability to open and operate the cannabis establishment has been submitted as requested from the Trenton Cannabis Advisory Committee. The micro licenses application fee has also been paid. The presentation packet before you includes proposed operational plans, outlines for community programs, employee incentives, partnering agreements, security plans, resident outreach intentions, commitment to local workforce hiring, community service, and collaboration with the schools that support both cannabis training along with dedicated schools that support social justice incentives. Kayla's qualifications include, but are not limited to, having worked for a retail pharmacy, and she is a nurse. She has committed since the age of 16 partnering in various projects throughout the city of Trenton. To hire, she will be using experienced cannabis staffing agencies such as Brennan and Flower Hire and Cannabis. An agreement is already in place with the Trenton Park and Authority, Jimmy Lee Youngblood of Youngblood Electric, and one will be obtained with the Trenton Police Department. The hours of operation will be tentatively between 8:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m., Monday through Saturday. To date, Kayla has done the following. She has obtained a conditional license from the state and secured a site at 31 East State Street, Trenton. She has obtained the letter of clearance from zoning to be centrally located in downtown and submitted the application and presented on January 17, 2024. The remaining steps are as follows. Obtain a resolution of support, hopefully, from council. Um, finish outfitting, um, the location. Complete the conversion of the conditional license to the annual license within this, from the state of New Jersey. The annual license will in turn allow the Vault to not only provide a platform of information and education on various products and methods of consumption to consumers, but also provide a considerable amount of revenue dollars to the city of Trenton's tax base. Please see pages 6 and 7 of the presentation for the potential tax revenue in the breakdown. Become, we look and seek hopefully to become the city of Trenton's first Haitian woman-owned and operated cannabis location. Right now, what I'd like to do is introduce Kayla. Um, so she can tell you a little bit more about her employee incentives and how she plans to participate with the community.
Good evening. Thank you, guys, uh, for having us. Uh, so to start, my name is Kayla Massanet. I'm gonna be reading here, so I probably won't be looking at y'all, your face. Um, so my name is Kayla Massanet, and my background is as follows. I'm a GED awardee. Um, I am a general construction graduate of Mercer County Community College. I'm a former local 254 carpenter's apprentice with a BA in criminal justice from College of St. Elizabeth. And a BS, I'm currently enrolled in school to get my R in, because right now I'm a LPN. I work for Dangler Construction as a Section 3 HIREE, traffic controller on the Miller Holmes Project, uh, rush cross, rush crossings project. I am an LPN, um, and a former school nurse in the Philadelphia School District. I also work in a local hospital, um, currently. I have been a medical cannabis card holder since 2017, licensed to carry gun holders since 2017, currently contracted by Safeguard Properties to do property verifications in the Mercer County area. I say these things to demonstrate this plan wasn't a new one. It's not a bandwagon I'm jumping on, and it isn't a phase. I have been preparing and working on this for some time. Um, my experience also working in the healthcare field, especially during COVID, was a very crucial time. Um, I noticed an increased uptake in a need for escapism, which is one of the reasons why I also wanted to venture into the marijuana population, um, because isolate, isolation and COVID and families were under scrutiny under bedtime, and a large population found a sense of relief, um, with their circumstances at the time in the use of cannabis products legally and illegally, unfortunately. Um, my primary focus is our relationships with the people who come to us. Um, our mission is to redefine the cannabis experience by cultivating a compassionate, safe, inclusive space with a diverse cannabis menu with exceptional customer service, like similar to Chick-fil-A. My goal is to guide and meet the needs of all we encounter by assistance to create a, a one-of-a-kind, uncomplicated, approachable, borderline, unique experiment while using therapeutic use, um, and education. Where am I on time? Am I, am I still good? 49 seconds left? Okay, all right, so, um, moving forward, we have a lot of plans in, in the binder. Um, it's going to show the direction of the company that we wish to go, which is community outreach, um, eventually. Because as a kid, I always wanted, I love the Double Dutch program, so I also want to bring back recreational activities for kids. Um, and housing a safe place, but also having a therapeutic space for people who do like to indulge in, um, a form of escapism. So with this, uh, we close out and want to also thank you for your time. And, uh, what we need from you is your support and hopefully your approval so we can move forward. So thank you.
Ooh, made it. Yeah, you did, made it.
Thank you.
Any council members have any questions?
Council President? Councilwoman Williams?
You gave everybody time. Thank you. Um, so I have just some questions. There's a lot of information here. Thank you for being so thorough, because, uh, it isn't often that we actually get packets as thorough.
Thank you.
That's a compliment.
Thank you.
Um, so I did look through it, and I know your startup costs, uh, were listed at $500,000. Do you already have that in capitalization, or are you still looking to raise money?
We do have most of the capitalization in place. We already secured it, and we have someone who, where we're under contract with the building, and it's gonna be a cash deal. So those are in place as well. We're going through the inspection process currently. So hopefully, if everything goes well with that, we should be closing next month. And so, yes, it's still revolving. But if we need to cut corners, like, you know, because at the end of the day, we have a large shopping list, but in order to open in interest of time, what we're like-
what we're liking to do is whatever the state minimum is to open and then we build as we go along.
Okay. And then actually, is there a bank vault in the basement or the?
We wish. No, actually the location is located right downtown. There's no bank vault. It's just, we utilize that name because we think of when people utilize cannabis, it's either to escape or to relieve, to hold in or to release. So just like a regular bank for safekeeping, we want people to be safe when they're coming to us. That's why we're going to make sure our products are vetted, um, and, and, you know, we educate them. There's videos and things that they can do on their own time.
Okay. And then as far as, uh, security, has the Trenton Police Department already done a review of your security plan?
We've hired the architect who's going to be putting together the whole plan as we've put the, everything together for the planning committee. We will be reaching out to Trenton Police Department. We have reached out to them and we understand that they have a program as well where we're able to hire on some of the police officers as part of our security plan as well. But everyone says the same thing. You need the resolution letter really first before we're talking to you. But with the experience and everything, to be honest with you, as far as the process is concerned, what we found is once you complete one hurdle, it opened up doors that more people are more open. It's susceptible to see that you're actually going to bring this across to the finish line. And then they dedicate more time in helping you cross over to the finish line. So right now, at this point with the planning, with the security plan, as far as the police department is concerned, a lot of that is after the resolution has been issued and then they know, okay, full force, what are we going to do?
Okay. And what is your timeline for opening at this point?
At this point, if, if we obtain the resolution of support from you, at the next step will be applying to the state for the annual. The inspections are being conducted with the next 30 days of the actual location. We've already secured an agreement with the architect and she's starting to work on the site plans and we'll be submitting our planning application so we can be going through this process simultaneously. So at which time, by the time we finish the planning review, the security plan, all of that will be in place.
Okay. And then, uh, my final question, and I, I'd have to quote Denzel Washington in the film Philadelphia. Uh, you have got a good pictures and it helps explain, but can you explain it to me like a five-year-old would understand?
Uh, which part? The pictures for the location?
Uh, the process of sale. If I wanted to purchase your, uh, because usually you see counters and employees, et cetera. So I'd like you to explain this because this is very unique, actually.
Oh, thank you. Well, see, so we're going to have a various means. First of all, because we're located downtown, we have entered into an agreement with the Trenton Park and Authority to make it comfortable for individuals to be able to use the parking. And as you know, when a client comes in, they can have like 20 minutes or 30 minutes and then they don't have to pay for parking. So one of the things that we've decided to do is come about, create a mobile app that people can actually order ahead of time. So they're literally just coming in, grabbing and go. We have spoken to the state and one of the things that we're also going to be having is, for example, lockers. So when you call, just like ordering your food, you place your order because a lot of times people already know the product that they're interested in, right? They're already shopping anywhere, somewhere. So because we'll be running focus groups to understand what are they utilizing and carrying some of the same product, they'll be able to go on their mobile app, place the order. Once the order has been pulled, they'll be notified so they know that it's pulled, it'll be placed in the locker, they come in. Um, security will check them, right? To make sure that they're, so it'll even be there. And then a second checkpoint when they come inside, then they'll go to the kiosk and the pickup window, submit their order ticket along with their ID all over again. And then a person will go to the locker, grab their bag, give it to them and they can leave. This will allow to also help minimize the lines. With the hours and where we're located downtown, Trenton has over 58,000 employees. With that being said, we're going to try to work our hours within being able to accommodate early on. But prior to a person either going to work, also their cars are already parked. So at lunchtime and then especially when work gets out around four to six o'clock. We understand that Trenton sometimes, once the state closes, um, everyone leaves, right? So so many events and things that we'll be doing or focus groups or possibly thank yous and things of that nature, we're going to try to do them towards the tail end of the day so we can see if we can keep them around a little bit longer. So basically you're working here and also spending here. Your car is already parked, we're centrally downtown, you'll be walking past other stores as well, probably. Let me go grab a bite to eat and pick this up while I'm out. My car is already parked and then go back to work.
So it will be just as easy for someone who didn't preorder to come and purchase?
Absolutely. Now, a person who didn't preorder, we're going to be having kiosks. So with the kiosk, a person can either, you can have order at the kiosk and then the order is pulled. Or if you're not sure, we're also going to be having budtenders there that are familiar with the product, which is why we're going to be using a staffing agency because they can properly vet and vet the individuals and actually check the references to ensure that they know exactly what we're talking about, what they're talking about when they're behind the counter. Because again, people smoke for different reasons and there's different strands, you know, and there's different ways that people can consume. So if a person needs an appointment, like to sit down with someone, that'll be something that they'll be able to curate on the website as well. So they have their own dedicated time and someone to give them that one-on-one attention.
Okay. And my last question, I thought it was impressive to see he had some market research listed. So I was curious how, um, he actually, you know, did that market research to see where people in Trenton are actually going presently to purchase.
Well, one of the things, um, we went on the CRC's website, we also ran, uh, went on Google and see who's open. You know, at the end of the day, everybody's going somewhere. So, uh, what dispensaries are within a 30-minute radius? Um, like Kayla has mentioned, she's had her, um, medical card since 2017. So from her having her medical marijuana card, what was her process and what did she notice? And she would travel up to 45 minutes to an hour away depending on the lines and depending on the time of availability. So utilizing her own personal experience and actually speaking to other people who have medical cards as well, um, that's how we determine where they're going. But we just did a random, what's in the binder right now is everywhere that's really within a 40-minute radius within the city of Trenton.
Well, thank you very much.
Thank you, Council President.
Council President?
One minute. I think Council Vice President had a question first and then Councilwoman Gonzalez. Council Vice President?
Thank you, Council President. Hello.
Hi.
Um, so this, this information could be, this is a lot of information. I've just got these. So this could be in here, but I perused through and I didn't see it. So I was just curious. Um, it looks like you're going to have high volumes of cannabis. You're going to be selling out of your storefront, um, with the kiosks. And I guess you'll have, um, frontboard sales, digital sales as well. Um, how many employees are you, are you, are you thinking that you're going to have to have on staff?
Well, right now we're a micro business, so we're only allowed to have up to 10. So one of the things that we're going to do, but the 10 can be rotational, for example, full-time or part-time. Because one of the things we want to do is be able to also accommodate some of the individuals that'll be working with their schedule. Because you'll have some people, especially now, that might want to go to school and learn more about cannabis. So those schedules, those schedules will pretty much fluctuate. So even though it's 10, it, you know, you might have full-time, you might have part-time and we might have some where it's on a consulting type basis to be able to accommodate those schedules.
And hours of operation?
Hours of operation. Currently downtown have hours from 7:00 to 10:00 AM. As far as what, if you're one of the visit, yeah, in the ordinance, it listed as 7:00 to 10, 7:00 AM to 10:00 PM for? Yeah. Yeah, I'm sorry. So anywhere in between there, but our standard hours will pretty much be from eight to let's say seven, eight o'clock at night.
Okay. And, um, I noticed that you, you, you did mention like incentives for employees, like a car and other things. Um, what about benefits?
Okay. So with benefits, what we're going to do is we're going to look at healthcare and we're going to try to figure out how to make it work. We have spoken with the Department, um, of Labor, we've, we're speaking with Veterans Affairs. Um, we're going to be speaking with Board of Social Services. Um, one of the things, it's not just about the people that's working with us. Some of Trenton's challenges have been housing, has been transportation and things of that nature. So what we're looking to do is to be able to facilitate with other agencies, for example, aisles. They have the electric cars now. So by having one of their kiosks and the taxis, right? We know social services has the Road to Success program, so also assisting them with driver's licenses and things like that. So those are some of the things by pulling those programs together, even if we don't do it, we're in a position to be able to outsource them to an agency that does and give them those references as we find a point of contact that we can send them to.
But you'll be looking for something in healthcare, especially?
Oh, absolutely. Oh, absolutely.
Okay. Um, and I know that you said, uh, influencers and stuff, will they be getting like incentives based on like percentage of sales or things like that? Or will they be on payroll?
Influencers won't be on payroll. That's, they're pretty much will be like contractors. It could be something that's promoting something as simple as an event. And influencers could be our very own influencers that are here. When I, when we, when we utilize the term influence, it doesn't necessarily mean the multimillion dollar person that everyone looks up to. No, it's a matter of who has a target market that they also want to educate and we have a good product and they're willing to stand with us. And we want them to stand, they're willing to stand with us and we're standing with them.
And finally, thank you. And finally, you mentioned staffing agency. Um, will you be hiring outside of the city of Trenton or, or only in the city of Trenton employees?
I can't say only in the city of Trenton because it all depends on qualifications. However, we're starting with Trenton first. This is, this is so, I mean, you can't go outside of home. You gotta do home verse. So, yeah.
Thank you very much. Best of luck.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
Yes, thank you. Thank you for the presentation. Um, two of my questions have been answered already, but I, one other question I had was, I see that you included your potential partnerships. So I wanted to ask, have you spoken to your neighbors around in the area and have their support in what's coming there?
Oh, absolutely. One of, one of the requirements was the, of the application is everyone within 200 square feet had to be notified. We sent out over 140 certified letters introducing ourselves, explaining the process and what we would be doing. And then they are also aware that we would be coming before council so that way they would have opportunity to also be here. If they had any objections or concerns or to be able to call the city at any time in between. All those documents pretty much went out between December and January. We're now in March. So they had about 60 to 90 days if there was any questions. And I'll be a funny, we know Trenton, Trenton, they don't have a problem picking up the phone if there's an issue. So, yes.
Thank you so much. And thank you, I, I think it's unique also. So best of luck to you also.
Thank you.
Councilwoman.
Thank you, Council President. So I don't have a question. I just wanted to really just say this is really a thorough presentation. Um, I really commend you both. I love the idea that is, one, your, uh, your first page talks about how you are Trenton-born. Um, so you are from the city of Trenton and I'm so glad that we have someone from Trenton knowing that they should be and we are worth investing in. So seeing your own value because it helps teach those that are coming up behind you. I love that you have your little lady here. She has just blown me away the whole evening long. I love the kiosk order. Um, that is absolutely fantastic. And the fact that your rewards program, that you have literally broken, broken it down in here. So folks understand exactly what you are planning to do. I think the hours between 8:00 AM and 8:00 PM is actually, um, really great, great timing. And every question that I thought that I needed to ask you, you actually answered it in your presentation. So kudos to both of you. I wish you the best and I look forward to hearing from you. And you did have to throw in there that Chick-fil-A thing, you know, you were wrong with that. But yeah, that type of service, that's the kind of service we want and our city not only wants, but we deserve. So thank you for that.
Thank you so much.
Any other council people?
So I just want to say thank you for the very thorough presentation. I echo the sentiments of my colleagues here. Um, young woman stepping up, coming to the forefront, helping us to help build the city. Excited to see it. Looking forward to see what's to come. I love the, the foresight about the technology with the app, like you were saying, the pickup and go type thing. Um, the, the deal with the parking authority, just working it out, right? Thinking ahead of time to see what you can do to help meet the needs of the people. Um, also taking care of your business at the same time. So I wish you the very best. Looking forward to seeing more from you.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
Welcome. Have a good evening. Mr. Garcia?
Certainly, Madam President. We've reached the point of public comment. Um, I have the clipboard here. We have six individuals signed up for public comment. And for the public, so public comment is limited to five minutes. You may address any matter that you wish. You may address any matter that you wish and understand that the council is not required to respond. Thank you. First person up for public comment is Deborah Cole. And please do state your name and address for the record.
Sure thing. My name is Deborah Cole. I live at, oh, 1126 Lamberton Street. I want to thank you for this opportunity to address you at this time. Um, I have one of the properties that borders Hannah Mallie and Hannah Mallie. Um, I support the vacation of Hannah Mallie and it's part of the ordinance is, it's in your packet 24-19. I trust that Jenna has given you all the information and all the correspondence that we had, uh, over the past several years regarding the alley. But I just want to reiterate a couple of them real briefly since it is on the docket. Uh, when it was open, the cars would zoom down that alley quickly and would not stop before they traversed the um, sidewalk, making it very dangerous for children and pedestrians who were trying to walk on the sidewalk. Also, there was a, a extreme lack of maintenance. The alley had several large potholes. And when a car or truck would hit these potholes, that it would rattle the house, the ground and, uh, Mr. Gonzalez's property. Um, the big trucks that would come down trying to save time by cutting through the alley were squeezing through, taking down branches of my tree, practically hitting Mr. Gonzalez's house just to save 10 seconds instead of going around the block. Uh, very few pedestrians actually use the alley. Uh, drug dealers do find their way, uh, to hide in there because it's not extremely lit, well lit. And some of the ATV riders and the motorcycle riders trying to evade the police when they bust them down from riding in the park, try to squeeze up through that alley to get away, to get away from the police. Um, so the lack of concern for the sidewalk pedestrian speed has made the alley actual, actually a detriment um, in the city as opposed to a benefit. So I'm in favor of keeping the alley closed and for the city to vacate Hannah Mallie. And thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you.
Edel, Edel Miro Gonzalez.
Uh, thank you. Good evening. Uh, pretty much you cover everything. Uh, I live in 11, 1132 Lamberton Street. I've been living there since 1984. The alley, it's too close to the house. It's dangerous. I'm in 10th alley since I've been living there. Potholes, I gotta fix it myself. It used to be cars, oil trucks. Heavy equipment going through the alleyway. My house operates. It did damage to my chimney in the house. Hasn't bought a check. I had to reline the chimney. I can't use it anymore. So I just want to thank you for this moment. Thank you.
Thank you.
Linda, is that Smith? Linda? She had to leave, understood. Char- Charles? Charles, I don't even know what your last name is. Thank you, sir.
I'd like to say good evening, everybody. My voice is kind of heavy, so I'm going to turn it down a little bit. Uh, last time I was here was in October. And you know, I'm going to bring you up to speed if you don't remember from before about the demolition of 196 and 202 Pennyton Avenue. It has been five months since the resolution was approved. And I was assured upon the resolution by the Director of Housing and Economic Development that this would be first on the list, those properties, because they were already made an imminent threat because people were living next to them. I'm number one living next to one of the properties. I'm still getting the same situation from that day to this very day. And it's always when it rains, whatever separation and whatever going on at the house, you know, it's an issue to my house. And each day that goes by, it's causing a water damage, mold, and that's what's happening in my house. Right now, it shouldn't even be before you because it's been five months. I mean, come on now. When you make a resolution, you're supposed to execute, not eliminate and go to other, uh, projects that's in the city that didn't have a resolution on it. I understand the mayor is the key, the city, he is the one. You cannot put a resolution in place and forget about that resolution and then put something else ahead of that. When you got a taxpayer like me that have been the owner of the house since 2013, and they're still paid up to this day today, okay? So my issue is, I don't want to keep getting the runaround. I have been very nice about this situation. I even talked to Mr. Beach February the 4th and on the same line with Mr. Carroll Construction. They assured me on the 4th, next week, we're gonna execute. And you know what they did? More lies and more deceptions. This is what I'm getting. I don't think it's fair to me as a taxpayer and a person that retired from the city to go through these situations. I know I'm not the only one going through the situation. I know the whole city has bigger problems just like mine. But when you make a resolution on certain things, you have to execute it because now it's a lie. It's five months. The last time I was here was October the 26th. It is March the 7th. Come on now, what are our city officials on? Me and Mr. Beach, I was in his office on the 4th of February, okay? He assured me, like I said, the vendor, the contractor, Carroll was on the three-way line with us. Come on, they don't lie to me. Because I feel like I'm being, you know, pushed to the side and just give me something to appease me. And honestly, I have not messed with the city since they made the resolution. I should not be here today. It's a waste of my time. You know, I work very hard. I'm still working. I'm chief engineer of two hotels in Princeton, the Hyatt Place. I don't have time to keep coming down here. I'm tired. I want to go home. You know what I mean? But I should not have to keep coming here with the same issues that's been five months ago. And not one step has been made about demo on these two properties. Somebody's gonna get hurt. I see those kids. It's winter month, so they're not out there that much at 202. I don't want to hear that we need public service to do a shut-off of the curb. Let me tell you. I know everything about that block between Antioch and Union Baptist Church where my father was the minister at, okay? So what I'm trying to say is this, I don't want to hear public service, we waiting for public service. Because I'm gonna tell you, when 200 Pennington Avenue caught on fire two years ago and almost caught on fire to my house, public service cut off the gas and the electric and cut the wires to both of those properties at 196 and 202. So don't give me lies and deceptions. I'm not arguing with you. They're giving me lies and deception about things that I already know about, okay? And it's time. Come on now. I mean, give me the opportunity and I tear that house down myself. I'm a heavy equipment operator. You pay for the dumpsters. I tear it down in two, three days. I take two weeks vacation. I guarantee the house will be down to the ground. And I'm qualified on all those equipment. Electrician, I'm boiler licensed, black blue seal. I'm high-pressure boiler. I'm HVAC. I'm accredited with the state lead mold. I got it all. I could tear the house down myself. See, that was my brother's house, and I just wish he didn't let it slip out of our opportunity as a family and let the city take that over. All I just ask in the city, I know my time is up. What are we gonna do about this? I mean, you can't get no answers now. I'm at the point where now I have to execute. I have to go and do what I have to do for the protection of my property. And it's getting bad, okay? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Michael Smith. Michael Smith? Understood. Farhadia Mohammed? Did I get that right anywhere near? Hadiya, thank you.
Hadiya Mohammed. I'm here in reference to 48 Delaware View Avenue again. I don't know if anybody remember me, but I was here the same time. The last gentleman was here. We were here at the same time. This is my first time back. The property in question is 48 Delaware View Avenue. It has been in my property since the 1960s. The property, I purchased the property in the year 2000. My late husband Harold Williams is a 100% disabled veteran from service-connected injuries during the Vietnam War. We met in 1979, was married in 2008, and it was in 2008 that the property taxes began to fall. But I didn't know that service-connected 100% disabled veterans were tax-exempt. And I was so busy into taking care of him, and I'm a disabled person myself. I was in a bus accident back in 1992. A Greyhound in New York, and I was seven months pregnant. So we've just been trying to take care of each other. And we was just having hard times. The Assessor finally did give us our tax-exempt status. But we were just not able to keep up with it. And then I think it was in 2020, no, because we got it in 2015. And then just recently with the last, or the next to the last city, you know, when they take the houses and for foreclosure, whatever, I don't know, because it was just for taxes. It was to a sale, and I fought everything to just not get it going away. So now it's in the city's hands. I spoke to Mr. Beach, and he said that he could give it to me for a dollar, but what am I gonna do with it? Number one, it's full of our family heirlooms from my grandfather, my uncle, my aunts, my cousins. It's full of heirlooms. My stuff, my mom's stuff, it's just full of things. My husband's things, notebooks that he wrote. I mean, I want to get in there. And I have the key to it. Why they locked the doors? I have no idea. They just boarded them up. I have keys. Oh, we can't leave it open. But yeah, city owns it, but I just don't think that the situation was fair. And also, I am experienced in childcare. Location, location, location is important. Delaware View sits right off of 29 and hits West State Street for people to go right to work. I ran a daycare for years up in Hartford, Connecticut, back in the 1980s. And I just want an opportunity to save our family's property. But they told me I can't do anything from Mr. Beach. He told me, working for the mayor, that he couldn't do anything without the city council. He's like, you can't, I can't just do this. He said, you know anybody? I'm like, uh, no. I don't know anybody down there. But he said, only through them can I get it. So he's like, you can't just give properties away. I mean, but I bought the property myself, and it's only taken away due to taxes. And with that occurring interest, I didn't have a mortgage. They told me to get a mortgage, but I told them I'm too poor for a mortgage. I miss a payment, you take my house. And look, now they're taking it during the taxes. So I don't know if there's anything I can do. If, I don't know what. I need advice. So if I can get help, I would appreciate it. I do want to do a childcare program. I want to do youth counseling and redirections. I want to bring back some Double Dutch because that's what I remember growing up. Hopscotch and even Jacks, whatever, something to get the children doing different things. Chess. I like chess and to help the children with homework. I love the STEM programs. So we could just, you know, just focus on the children, the youth, because it's their future. Thank you. And one more thing. I just had my ninth grandchild. And we also have our great-grandchild, who's three. And we need something to leave. My mom, they left things for us, and I have nothing to leave to mine. I thought I was doing something when I paid cash for the house. Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam President, we've reached the point of civic comment. And it is your will, whichever you'd like to start with.
Thank you. Counselwoman Edwards.
Thank you, Council President. It just happened so fast. Good evening, everyone. I didn't have much to say today anyway, but I do want to comment to you, ma'am, about the 48 Delaware View Avenue. I do remember when you came to us about this, when you said that your late husband had passed and you didn't realize that the tax exemption would go away after he was deceased. So, you know, again, I'm sorry that that happened, but I'm sorry.
That's a misunderstanding.
Misunderstanding.
Tax exemption went away when he passed. It was before. We were trying to, first of all, we spent a couple of years not even knowing to file. And then when we did file, it was late, and they just kept putting on interest fees and interest fees, and the interest turned out to be more than the actual tax.
Okay.
Really more interest than anything else. And then when I kept trying to get them to give me an amount, I was a thousand dollars a month to pay it off. Just let everything into me.
Okay. Well, I want to talk to you about that and see how we can help you and things because, you know, the conversations that you had with them since you've last been here is a little interesting. And, you know, you have your family heirlooms and items inside of the house, so that's very concerning. So we want to make sure that you get the help that you need with at least accessing your personal belongings. And let's see if we can work with the city on, if you're trying to buy it back, it was yours. And, you know, you had some unfortunate situations happen. So let's just see how we can help you. And I will meet with you after the meeting to collect your information so we can get some resolution with this. All right. Thank you. And I also wanted to address the Pennington Avenue situation, but he left. So I'll hold my comments on that as well. So that brings me to a closing, and good to see you all today. Have a good night.
Thank you, Counselwoman. Counselwoman Frisbee?
Thank you, Council President. So I wanted to address Ms. Mohammed. I believe you and I have been interacting via email. I believe that that's how you got in touch with Mr. Beach. Is that correct? Did you and I, Frisbee? Did you get an email from me connecting with Mr. Beach? I thought you were the one, I believe, that he said that the house was condemned and it was a safety hazard for you that you would have to... That's not the right one? I've been dealing with so many. If it's not you, then I apologize.
It was like construction, but I had all the plumbing redone.
Okay.
But I wanted to pitch a remodel, so...
Okay, so then I may be thinking of someone else. Okay. But the one thing I did want to say is we cannot advise you. That's first. That is not our place. We would get in a lot of trouble for that. Mr. Beach saying that it's up to us to, whether or not that decision is made, that's something we'll have to look into as well. I'm glad Counselwoman Edwards is going to look into that. I'm very interested, and I'm prayerful. I'm hopeful that you will get your family heirlooms. At the very least, no one should lose that, especially when there was an opportunity to get it. Those are irreplaceable. There's no prices you can put on that. So I'm prayerful that that will actually happen. I wanted to say congratulations to our cheerleaders. They're all gone, but I'm excited for Counselwoman Gonzalez, that you actually saw fit to acknowledge them. They are a sport, and they deserve their accolades. I'm glad that we gave them just that. And also, Mr. Lewis, he did leave, so I will leave that for later on. Thank you for those who came out about acknowledging the two for the alleyway, Hannah Mallie. So in support of that, we always appreciate when the community comes out and pays attention to us on the docket, knowing that we're here for you. Your voice matters. It absolutely does make a difference in what we do. Let's see. That is, on this, I'm excited about the cannabis organization, the vault that came before us, to have such a young lady, young woman here, 30 years of age, presenting this, who is a Trenton resident, that really encourages me and hopefully will encourage others in our community to invest here in our community. That when you learn and you go somewhere and you get your education, that you bring it back here and you invest here in our community, in our city. I want to thank everybody for coming out this evening, including my aide over there. I see you, Ms. Anne Hyde. Thank you so much for being out here. Thank you to everyone who did come out on this evening. I appreciate every one of you, including DCA, who's out here every meeting with us. Appreciate you as well. Our city's mission statement is recognizing that the people of Trenton have made us guardians of the public trust. We are committed to govern with integrity and fiscal responsibility, to seek excellence in the city's operations, and to serve all the city's people with respect and compassion. I thank each and every one of you for coming out here. We don't take you or your time for granted. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you. Counselwoman Gonzalez?
Thank you, Council President. Thank you, everyone, for being present today. Just a couple of things I want to say. Congratulations again to the young ladies who were here. As I stated before, you know, working with those young ladies, they often do not get recognized. So I just wanted them to know that we appreciated them. And to the captains and co-captains who spoke, thank you to the vote for their information. It was a very good presentation, and I look forward to actually reading through it thoroughly later on today. As far as everyone who came and spoke on your concerns, thank you, Ms. Cole and Senor Gonzalez. So I wanted them to know that we will be in support. And thank you for being present and sharing your concerns with us. To Ms. Mohammed, Counselwoman Edwards pretty much said what I was going to say, if you could just leave your information so someone, one of us can actually try to assist you with that. We appreciate you bringing that to our attention. And to Mr. Lewis that left, we've been going back and forth with emails, and it is unfortunate that he is being told specific dates. And then those dates continue to change and change and change. And it's been happening since October. So I understand the frustration when you tell someone on a specific day that things are going to get done, and then they do not happen. So to Mr. Lewis, we will continue to work with him and hopefully get those two properties down in a timely fashion. And as we do know, we have a lot of buildings. We have a lot of dilapidated buildings that are vacant and are causing issues to other neighborhoods, to the neighboring homes around. And we have a long list, and we're trying to get through all of them. So please be patient. But again, for him to be told specific dates and then they continue to change is just not fair to him. So thank you again for everyone being present, and Happy Women's History Month.
Thank you, Counselwoman. Counselwoman Williams?
Thank you, ma'am. I just want to start off with thanking everybody for coming, everybody who's watching online tonight. It's important that you get to see what we are doing, but we also, particularly if you come physically to city council, we get to hear what's going on for you regarding our city. And disappointed to hear about what's happening with Mr. Charles on Pennington regarding these properties because we were actually pretty excited to be able to pass that ordinance and make it happen. Hopefully, this will get resolved quite soon. Having seen these properties, they are in very poor condition. Ms. Mohammed, I'm sorry this is taking the length that it is for your situation. I'm not a lawyer. And anyway, neither would I try to offer you advice, but I know my colleagues who are going to be speaking with you and working with you definitely will do their best. And I hope you also get your family heirlooms and something to pass along to your family. Having family that served in the military, it's very important, particularly when you have that connection to service. And I know your husband's not with us, but I would like to say thank him, to thank him for his service in Vietnam and for everything that he did for our country. And I hope things will work out, and I'm confident that they will, ma'am. So we have some events coming up. Starting on Monday is the Citizens Police Academy, which my colleagues, Council President Feliciano, Council Vice President Janet Figaro Kettenberg took last year, and they very much enjoyed and have been very much proselytizers for it to encourage others. So please, if you are available, want to be an involved citizen or get more involved, consider it because it does... citizen, or get more involved, consider it, because it does change your perspective. I took it a very long time ago, and it would be good for us to have more citizens take this course so they see what the police are doing, and the police get here and see what citizens are thinking about how they're doing it. It's a good exchange of information as well as learning. This weekend, if you go to the movies or like movies, it's the Oscar Weekend. So, the Trenton Film Society will be showing the Oscar Shorts in categories of live action, documentary, and animation at Passage Theater. So, please find them online. If you haven't seen any of these short films, a lot of them are very, very fun. Some are quite moving, and they're usually films from filmmakers that you'll see later on make large, much bigger movies that you'll see go for Best Picture, et cetera. But it's something in a city that doesn't have a movie theater, to really have a chance to commune, get together with other film lovers and watch. It's a special moment, so please consider attending. And then outside of that, I just want to remind folks about this Saturday night is a fundraiser for children's futures with the Bowl-a-thon at Morrisville Lanes, and that starts at eight-thirty at night. If you could, please come and support. Tickets for adults are twenty-five dollars. For children five to ten, they're ten dollars. And look forward to hopefully seeing some of you there. Thank you very much. Have a good weekend. Please be safe out there. And if you see something that our city needs to improve on, or any of our wards need to improve on, please do reach out to us. You can always find us in our email addresses and phone numbers on the city website. And it's important because we can't fix something unless we know about it, and we're all in this together. So, thank you.
Councilman Harrison?
Yes. I would like to first start off tonight. The spring giveaway by the Trenton Police Department, March twenty-third, nine AM to one PM. It's Easter baskets, simply with perishable and non-perishable items will be distributed at the Trenton Police Department, two-twenty-five North Clinton Avenue. For more information, please email thecommunityaffairs@trentonpolice.net. Our next event is Community Affairs has a cafe conversation Saturday, March the sixteenth, eleven AM to one PM, at the Orchard House Cafe, one-thirty-four East Tannover Street, with special guest speaker, Dr. Debra Hurston from Capital Health. There'll be free food and beverages served, get-to-know first responders, engaging conversation about the community initiatives and events, and meet up with friends and neighbors. It's being sponsored by, again, questions, email communityaffairs@trentonpolice.net. Okay, my colleague already said about the police academy, I mean, about the police citizens academy, which is March fourteenth through May sixteenth. It's Thursday. It's once a week, six PM to nine PM at the Trenton Police Department, two-twenty-five North Clinton Avenue. Cost is free. Applications are available by contacting community affairs@trentonpolice.net. Applicants must be, must live in Trenton, be at least twenty-one years old, and have not been convicted of a crime in the last five years. Also, regarding my colleagues, we, I understand what they were talking about, tabling twenty-four dash zero-one-five. I would like to have on the record the Health Department to give their input into it, also with the rest of my colleagues, so it'll be untabled on the nineteenth, so we could have a more discussion. If you go to my Facebook page, I will have a link on there regarding the diseases that are from the backyard chickens. So, people can go on there, too. Also, there we go. The NIA, the Neighborhood Improvement Association, March the twenty-third. We're doing Freeman Lane between Hampton and Chambers Street, nine AM to one PM. It's a legal dumping cleanup. That's it. And I thank everybody, and have a blessed evening.
Thank you, Councilman.
You're welcome. Thank you, Council President.
Council Vice President.
Thank you, Council President. Hello, everybody. Thank you all for your input this evening. I just want to remind everybody tonight, you know, there's ninety-two thousand residents in the city of Trenton, and a fraction of that are city employees, and a smaller fraction of that are us council people. I feel like, you know, we are doing the best that we can to implement change and to answer the calls of our constituents. I'm a strong advocate for quality of life in my constituents, in my community, in my neighborhood. And I just ask, I know we ask this sometimes for patience, but I really do strongly say, you know, give us a little bit of heat and give us a little bit of patience, because, you know, when we do approve of resolutions that come across our dais, you know, then we do leave it up to our administration to now implement them. And there are a lot of services that are needed for our city of Trenton. And there are a lot of backlog things that did not get done in previous administrations, under previous council. And we are doing the best that we can, and we do have everybody's good grace and change and wants and needs for our taxpayers in mind. Ms. Cole and Mr. Gonzalez, thank you guys for coming and speaking today. As you guys know, it was a labor of love getting Hannah Mallie vacated. It was partially vacated in the previous, under the previous administration, under the previous council. And I'm not even sure if that went before council to have it done, but it had been vacated for several years. And you both communicated to me the need and the want to have that done. And I was just, I'm glad that you did, and you provided all the tools. You guys did all your homework, all the research. And, you know, when I got a no from administration first, that was not enough for me. So, I was relentless, and I'm glad that I was. You know, we need these things. You guys are taxpaying citizens in the city, and you deserve the best quality of life. So, I am very glad that we were able to get this done. I'm glad that I didn't give up on it. I'm glad you guys didn't give up on it. And I just want to thank my colleagues for adding it to consent agenda so that it will be passed. So, congratulations for that, you guys. And to anybody else in our city, you know, we are trying to get the things done that you guys need for us to get done for you, and it is your right for us to be able to get those things for you. So, again, thank you, guys. Thank you for your patience. I'm asking for continued patience for myself and for my colleagues as we move forward. Have a wonderful night. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Council Vice President.
Thank you, everyone, for joining us tonight and for being here. We appreciate you being here. Thank you to those that came forward to speak up about your concerns. Certainly, we do care and take it very seriously. What I do want to say is sometimes we get emails from people, and they'll email all of us on the same email correspondence. We cannot all respond in that chain because it's a violation of the Open Public Meetings Act. So, no one is ignoring what's happening. It would be easier if, when you're emailing, you have at least a minimum of three council people on it to give the option to come back, because here's the other thing. None of us know who's answering what. So, if you email all of us, you may not see anything from anyone, because no one's going to say, well, hey, I took it, or it was me. So, we don't know what's happening. So, please don't ever think that we're ignoring. Let us just all do better with that process. Shout out to the cheerleaders from TCHS. I did say that I graduated from Notre Dame, but I do teach at the high, so I'm a tornado by default, right? To the vault, again, wonderful young lady coming forward, looking to see what happens. To Mr. Lewis, what I wanted to say about that was, is that if damage is being caused to his home by fault of whatever is happening, I wonder if that's where that tort claim form would come in to play. So, maybe that may be something that you may want to tell him, that he may want to look into, the tort claim form. If things happen, they can pick it up in the clerk's office. If damages are happening to the property by way or fault of the city, because the fact that Mr. Beach and everybody said this was going to happen, and he has the document saying that it was, and it did not, then if there's damages happening to his house, then he can see them about that with that form possibly. So, if you're in contact with him, that may be something that you might want to let him look into. To Ms. Mohammed, again, I'm sorry for everything that's happening regarding your valuables, and I'm sure that my colleague will look into it to see what can be done to help you get your items out of the house as you should have them. For the alley, it was our pleasure to go ahead and take care of that. Thank you for coming forward to speak. You want to thank you to CVP Figaro Kattemberg for speaking up. And what I want to say is I'm glad that all the council people, like, when we have issues or concerns that our constituents are bringing to the forefront, we have no problem dialoguing and discussing and trying to figure out what's best to do to help serve the people better. And that's what I do love about this council, is that when it comes to serving the people, our hearts and minds are in the same place when it comes to that. So, I wanted to say that. The Trenton Police Academy, if you haven't signed up, Citizens Academy, you should sign up. It is a wonderful experience. Councilman Harrison actually did graduate with the last class. CVP and I graduated the class before that. It was a valuable, a valuable experience. That being said, I'm done for the evening. Everybody have a great week and a wonderful weekend, and that's it. Thank you.
When you call, Madam President.
Let us continue.
Certainly. Madam President, we've reached the point of the docket, and if you want to ask for a motion to approve communications petitions and reports.
Yes, may I have a motion to approve communications petitions and reports? Mr. Garcia.
Roll call. Councilwoman Edwards?
Yes.
Councilwoman Figaro, excuse me, Vice President Figaro Kattemberg.
Yes.
Councilwoman Frisbee?
Yes.
Councilwoman Gonzalez?
Yes.
Councilman Harrison? Councilwoman Williams?
Yes.
And Council President Feliciano?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Thank you.
And Madam President, if you want to ask for a motion to approve the minutes this evening, we have minutes of November second, twenty-twenty-three, and the addition, which was circulated, the minutes for twelve-twenty-one, twenty-twenty-three.
May I have a motion to approve the minutes of eleven to twenty-twenty-three and twelve-twenty-one, twenty-twenty-three?
So moved.
Thank you. Councilwoman Edwards?
Yes.
Vice President Figaro Kattemberg?
Yes.
Councilwoman Frisbee?
Yes.
Councilwoman Gonzalez?
Yes.
Councilman Harrison? Councilwoman Williams?
Yes.
And Council President Feliciano?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Can I say something real quick? I'm sorry. I just want to shout you and your team out, Mr. Garcia, for pushing through the minutes, getting us to where we need to be. Thank you for your diligence and for the delegation of the duties to your staff to make sure that we are up to snuff and getting better to where we need to be, to be on point. So, thank you for that.
Thank you. Moving on to consent agenda. Madam President, if you want to ask for a motion for consent agenda, that consent agenda consists of resolutions twenty-four dash eighty-five, eighty-six, eighty-seven, eighty-eight, eighty-nine, ninety, ninety-one, ninety-two, ninety-three, ninety-four, ninety-five, ninety-six, ninety-seven, ninety-eight, ninety-nine, one hundred. And that will be the entire consent agenda. If you want to ask for a motion to approve.
May I have a motion to approve the entire consent agenda consisting of the numbers read by Clerk Garcia?
So moved. Second.
Madam President?
Yes.
I have a question on twenty-four zero eight-eight, real quick. Resolution. We have a new version that was provided to us, and I'm wondering what the amendment was, the new version that was provided to us tonight versus the one that we put into reading on Tuesday.
That version was received this afternoon, and there were some, I believe there were some. Thank you.
Madam President, may I?
Yes.
Hi. Good evening, Council. Adam Flutus, Business Administrator. The question regarding twenty-four zero eighty-eight, yes, there was a discrepancy on the resolution. One of them should have been strictly just to allocate the funding for ARP. But for some reason, there was language that made it to that resolution that also stated that we were also awarding, not only were we allocating the funding from ARP, but we were also awarding the contract. And that, and that is not the case. And the clerk's office actually brought it to our attention. And so, we amended the portion, we added that, the piece where it says that we were awarding the contract on that resolution. And then we just made it actually just to allocate the funding from ARP. And then eighty-nine is now strictly awarding the contract to gals to purchase the, the uniforms for the fire department. So, that is the, the one change that was made was actually just that, the win away with the award, yes, which was not proper, because you cannot do both in one resolution. Yes.
So, thank you. So, Mr. Garcia?
Yes.
What happens now? I mean, they amended, I mean, this, so we had it on the consent agenda. We said, yes, we wrote, we're going with it. Now, there's this that has been changed. Do we vote to say we still want to leave this on the consent agenda with the change?
I believe you can still leave this on the consent agenda as amended. It's not, that's not a problem.
So, Madam President, the intent, the original intent was for that resolution to, to allocate the funding, which was mentioned on the resolution. So, it really is, there's nothing that affects the actual intent. It was just removing the language that made, we don't know how it made it in, stayed in the resolution that we're also saying and awarding the contract to gals.
It really has been the title of it.
Okay.
And Madam President, if I may, if it's your will, it can remain on the consent agenda unless someone else wants to pull it out. But that's your call if you want to still include it on the consent agenda.
Okay. Thank you. Does anybody have any problems with it being on the consent agenda?
No.
Okay, so let's continue. Thank you.
Okay. With that being said, I believe we had a motion and a second for the consent agenda. Was there any other discussion regarding any items in the consent agenda? Hearing none. I'll go through the roll call. Councilwoman Edwards?
Yes.
Vice President Figaro Kattemberg?
Yes.
Councilwoman Frisbee?
Yes.
Councilwoman Gonzalez?
Yes.
Councilman Harrison? Councilwoman Williams?
Yes.
And Council President Feliciano?
Yes.
Motion carried. I believe, Madam President, if you'll give me a moment, I think we just lost Councilman Harrison.
Okay.
I'd like to just try and get him back. Oh, there it goes. And there he is again. Councilman Harrison? Hold on one second.
Councilman Harrison, are you with us?
Yes.
Thank you.
Just please stand by one moment. I believe we were at a, we are on to the roll call resolution. And roll call resolution being, roll call resolution twenty-four dash eighty-four, resolution authorizing settlement of a worker's compensation claim in the matter of Joseph Muni III versus the City of Trenton, claim petition number twenty-eighteen dash twelve-oh-five-four in the claim amount of fifty-nine thousand, four-hundred-and-twenty-five dollars and twenty cents, including attorney fees and costs. And Madam President, if you want to ask for a motion to approve?
May I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Noted. Roll call. Councilwoman Edwards?
Yes.
Vice President Figaro Kattemberg?
Yes.
Councilwoman Frisbee?
Yes.
Councilwoman Gonzalez?
Yes.
Councilman Harrison? Councilwoman Williams?
Yes.
And Council President Feliciano?
Yes.
Motion carried. On to ordinances. Ordinances for first reading and introduction, we have ordinance twenty-four dash sixteen, ordinance amending ordinance twenty-three dash twenty-five, creating a senior citizen advisory council by the City of Trenton, which is reintroduced to correct errors. And Madam President, if you want to ask for a motion to approve that?
Yes, thank you. May I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Roll call. Councilwoman Edwards?
Yes.
Vice President Figaro Kattemberg?
Yes.
Councilwoman Frisbee?
Yes.
Councilwoman Gonzalez?
Yes.
Councilman Harrison? Councilwoman Williams?
Yes.
And Council President Feliciano?
Yes.
Motion carried. Ordinance twenty-four dash seventeen, ordinance amending Ordinance 24-17, ordinance amending ordinance 23-50 to release, vacate, and extinguish any and all public rights in and to the remaining portion of Baker Alley.
May I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Roll call. Councilwoman Edwards?
One second, one second.
I'm sorry.
I just want to point out, I know Mr. Har, Councilwoman Harrison is not available with us. But each of the, my colleagues received the map with a highlighted area behind El Catador, which designates the portion of Baker Alley that would be covered with this ordinance. And it is where the three cars are located just off of the entrance on Mulberry Street. So it is a minimal portion of land. It is not where a structure was previously created, nor is it the entire length of Baker Alley going towards R Street. I just wanted to clarify that for folks.
Thank you, thank you, Councilwoman. Mr. Garcia?
Yes.
If there's no other discussion, moving through the roll call, correct?
Yes.
I'll go ahead with that roll call again. Councilwoman Edwards?
Yes.
Vice President Figueroa Kattonberg?
Yes.
Councilwoman Frisby?
Yes.
Councilwoman Gonzalez?
Yes.
Councilman Harrison? Councilwoman Williams?
Yes.
And Council President Feliciano?
Yes.
Motion carried. Ordinance 24-19, ordinance to release, vacate, and extinguish any and all public rights in a portion of Hanam Alley.
May I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? We can go to the roll.
Certainly. Roll call. Councilwoman Edwards?
Yes.
Vice President Figueroa Kattonberg?
Yes.
Councilwoman Frisby?
Yes.
Councilwoman Gonzalez?
Yes.
Councilman Harrison? Councilwoman Williams?
Yes.
And Council President Feliciano?
Yes.
Motion carried. And Madam President, I believe those are all the items we have at this time for the docket. If you want to ask for, if there's nothing further, if you want to ask for a motion to adjourn.
Can I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
Roll call. Councilwoman Edwards?
Yes.
Vice President Figueroa Kattonberg?
Yes.
Councilwoman Frisby?
Yes.
Councilwoman Gonzalez?
Yes.
Councilman Harrison? Councilwoman Williams?
Yes.
And Council President Feliciano?
Yes.
Motion carried. Meeting adjourned. Thank you.